Okay. Should we get rolling? Are we okay with TV back there? Okay. Call and order the Tuesday, March 19th meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council. Rebecca, you want to do roll call?
Councilmember Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Here.
Mayor Vazia.
Here. If you could join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, there are no presentations. Oh, sorry, we should start with public comment before we do presentations. Any member of the public may address the town council concerning any item not on the agenda. If you can please limit your time to three minutes. And you will have an opportunity to speak at each of the agenda items. Is there anybody who wishes to address an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to the consent calendar. Item four, the purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or been discussed previously, do not require further discussion. They're approved by a single motion. Any member of the council staff or public may request removal of an item for discussion. Is there anybody who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? And if not, then I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to-
There's a member of the public.
Oh, okay. If you could please come to the microphone and give your name and-
Lucinda Smith, 4B.
So you'd like to remove 4B?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we will remove 4B. Should we address 4B first?
No, I'll move that we approve items 4A through 4F, except for item B.
Second.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Vazia.
Yes. Okay, so item 4B is the second reading of an ordinance of the town council of town of Corder Madera amending Corder Madera Municipal Code Title V to add tobacco retailer license requirements, prohibit sale of flavored tobacco products, and prohibit pharmacies from engaging in tobacco retailing, determining that the adoption of the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Are there any questions from the council for staff on this item? No, then hearing none, we will move to public comment.
I don't have a lot of comment on it other than the fact I wanted to make sure that e-cigarettes were included, and I don't know the whole history because I haven't been to all the meetings. So I wanted to just bring that up and ask, are e-cigarettes included in this ordinance? Or is it, I didn't see it specifically covered. So if it's not, could it be added?
Okay, thank you. Staff and legal counsel, I think you can address that.
It covers all tobacco products. It's a tobacco retailer license, and in order to sell any tobacco product, whether it, of any sort, so e-cigarettes would be included.
Actually, just to have on the record, I just wanted to point out that under 5.06.030 of the ordinance, which is the section about definitions, number seven is electronic smoking device, which is defined to mean any electronic, an electronic device which can be used to deliver an inhaled dose of nicotine or other substances, including any component, part, or accessory of such a device, whether or not sold separately. Electronic smoking device includes any such electronic smoking device, whether manufactured, distributed, marketed, or sold as an electronic cigarette, an electronic cigar, an electronic cigarrillo, an electronic pipe, an electronic hookah, or any other product or descriptor.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item? Okay, then I will bring it back to the council for any comment or a possible motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve item-
Sorry. I'll make a motion that we approve item 4B.
Second.
Has been a motion and a second?
Do I need to recite the whole title? What do you think, Theresa? I'll move that we approve item 4B, which is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 983, is introduced on March 5th, 2019, in ordinance of the town council of the town of Corder Madera. Number one, amending Corder Madera Municipal Code Title V, business licenses and regulations, to add tobacco retailer license requirement, prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products, and prohibit pharmacies from engaging in tobacco retailing, and, two, determining that the adoption of the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Sequa.
Councilmember-
Just tiny-
So we have a motion and a second?
Yes, and a tiny comment.
So that means we're closed for comment, right?
I thought motion and second meant it's up for discussion.
Oh, actually, you're right. You're right. I'm so sorry. You're absolutely correct.
Tiny point, tiny point that I am so proud of us doing this and following your leadership, Mr. Mayor, and the Food and Drug Administration nationally is starting to take steps in this direction and backing up what we're doing. That's all.
Thank you so much. Sorry about that. Yes, let's vote.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Vazia.
Yes. Let's move on to item 5A, public hearings. Public hearing for consideration, possible action to introduce an ordinance of the town council amending the town municipal code to allow dogs on leash in public park areas designated by town council resolution, and to clarify that leashed dogs in public places must be under constant control, make other non-substantive changes. Mario?
Good evening, good evening, old mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing us to put this item on the agenda. I do want to give a very brief background to the council about the thought process that led the commission to part of this conversation, and that is with the voice that was heard back in 2015 and 2016 regarding the interest of having a dog park in Corder Madera. Probably for almost a year, the commission worked with local volunteers, also parts of the Marin Humane Society, along with interested parties, with trying to flush out an idea for the location for a dog park. We did end up contracting with a landscape architect firm to help us do some site assessments and studies to really try to find the best location that we could look at in town. We identified several locations, part of, some of were town-owned properties, some were not, some were school district property, and we had a very thoughtful discussion in terms of how we would introduce the idea of a dog park, you know, whether it would be on the east side of, the bay side of town, more on the west side. So there was a good, long discussion about that, and through that process, where we did identify some very attractive locations that could be, there was, there wasn't a feasible plan with support that, working with the neighbors, we thought would be, the commission thought would be a good idea to present to council. So at that point, the conversation turned more towards having a revamp of our, or another look at our ordinances and rules regarding animals in the park. As it stands right now, the ordinance lists that no animals be allowed in the park, and the culture of pet ownership in Corder Madera and largely Marin has changed over the last five-plus years, and the commission wanted to be more inclusive of those extended family members for a community, and they wanted to have that conversation about allowing dogs in our parks on leash. So we've, over the past six-plus months, have had good discussions with the commission staff, other municipalities, and we've looked at different ordinances and rules, and we also, in conjunction with the Central Marin Police Authority, wanted to come up with a plan to be able to mirror our other local jurisdictions. So that's what we're presenting tonight. We're looking at making that amendment to allow dogs in town parks on leash under owner control, and part of that is also the resolution that lists the locations where dogs on leash would not be allowed, and those are listed in the staff report, which are the tennis courts, fenced-in playgrounds, basketball courts, and skate parks. That, of course, is always under resolution, and it's under the town council's purview to be able to review that and update that as needed. Be happy to answer any questions regarding that and sort of the commission's thought process and how we've come to these recommendations.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there questions from council members?
I've got a couple. First of all, was this a unanimous recommendation from Park and Rec Commission?
It was not. It was a seven-to-one vote.
No. Any material objections? Is there, are there any things that could be accommodated and make the ordinance that much better to get that eighth vote or final vote?
That's a good question. I think the commissioner who voted against it was, largely wanted to voice the concerns of the public who maybe didn't want the ordinance pushed through, say pushed through, the ordinance amended.
Yeah.
But I don't think there would be any substantive change that we could make to accommodate that vote.
There was one question raised by a member of the public, actually simultaneously to me and the town manager by chance on the sidewalk, which is, what about commercial dog walkers? Somebody comes in with eight dogs on leashes, is that, as long as that person has plenty of bags with them, is that allowed? Or is there any, is there any thought of prohibiting commercial dog walkers in the park, if you will?
So that, that conversation, and we haven't had substantial conversations about that, but I think that's something that would probably work with our business license operations. It's never easy. So basically, our ordinance does defer in many aspects to the county ordinance as it relates to that, so you would need a business license to be a dog walker, and the county ordinance requires you not to have more than, if you have a business license, you can't have more than, you can't walk more than five dogs at any given time. Now, I'll tell you, it's one that we don't enforce, but after the conversation with that resident that I spent 30 more minutes with, we are, I did talk to our business license person, and we are reviewing that to see what licenses are out there and to make sure that we share the requirements of five or less dogs, and it's something that we will monitor a little bit more, but it was a good, interesting question and something we need to pay attention to.
Just two other quick ones. This will bring us, or the hope here is that it brings us in alignment with Larkspur and San Anselmo?
Correct.
Rules. And final is, this is our first hearing, do we, are we acting, are we just hearing and recommending? What are we doing tonight?
You have two items before you. One is a, an ordinance. An ordinance requires two readings. It would ordinarily come back, if it is introduced this evening, it would come back to you on the consent calendar for adoption at the next council meeting. It could, at that point, be pulled off, much like one of the items was pulled off today. You also have a resolution in front of you that requires only one reading. The resolution, if adopted, would be approved this evening. However, the resolution does not take effect. It's drafted so that it does not take effect unless and until the ordinance goes into effect. So should you adopt the resolution this evening and then ultimately choose not to adopt the ordinance, that resolution would never take effect.
So does that require then two different votes, one for the ordinance and one for the resolution?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
And I would suggest that you do the ordinance first. The resolution is assuming that you've introduced the ordinance.
Has this been published on Nextdoor?
We published the agenda on Nextdoor, and we, it was highlighted, but it was not a separate post.
Okay. Would it be difficult to do it as a separate just to get a reaction from the people in town?
We, we could do that if you wish. We tend, we have a policy of closing the discussion on Nextdoor posts because they're not monitored, but if you would like us to monitor and moderate the discussion, we would need to do that.
I'm just saying, if you post it and then somebody else can open a discussion and we can at least get a sense of what's going on, because I don't have an impression that a lot of folks in town know that we're going to start allowing dogs in town park, and I have no idea how folks would react with hearing it. You know, there are currently dogs that go there anyway, the family and the dog go, but...
Actually, I can help answer that. A neighbor actually did post something on Nextdoor and encouraging people to come to the meeting to support the resolution. There were some comments on that. Am I allowed to say that? I'm allowed to answer his question?
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions down here?
I don't have a question, but can I make one, just sort of request for the future? Oh, wait, we haven't opened it to the-
We haven't opened it to the public yet, so. I have a question then. So Mario, you said you've been working on a dog park since 2015?
The commission worked on it starting 2015, so the majority of the work with the consultants and was during 2016, and they came to a resolution, the resolution was to not make any recommendation to council, I believe, I want to say it was in 2017.
And what do you think the rationale for that was?
The rationale the commission felt was that there was, there was no strong support for any, for one location over another, and there was, there was a lack of support from the neighbors in terms of, the most ideal location that we looked at was the grass strip between Pixley and the parking lot on the west end of the park, and in consideration of the proximity to the neighborhood, it wasn't a popular, popular spot to have it.
And what were the other options?
One of the other options was the Porter Cooley property. One of the other options-
Wait, which place then?
The Porter Cooley, that's over across from, on, across from the DMV.
I know what you mean.
It's in our general plan for housing potentially. And then also, one of the locations was possibly the, the school district was maybe going to be involved when the cove was being built, and then another location was over off Paradise Drive or San Clemente Drive, across from the CHP office.
Did we look at actually carving out a chunk of town park?
Wasn't there once an idea to have a kind of a triangle near the pond, near the Twin Cities daycare in there?
That location was a conversation for the community guard, and we never identified it for the dog park.
That's right.
So there never was a conversation about taking part of town park and turning it into a dog park?
No more than, than the median between Pixley and the parking lot.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. So I assume that the concern that residents have about a dog park being near their home is noise? Is that correct?
Noise and a visual nuisance.
Okay, sure. Okay. I'm just curious, I'm sure that there's data out there on the, the background noise that a dog park produces, and I won't fall, you guys, if you haven't hunted that down, but I'd be kind of curious to know just how much noise does a dog park actually produce relative to, say, you know, a playground where there's children playing, or a park where there are dogs on leash, but maybe less sparsely than in a dog park anyway. Just some food for thought.
Thank you. Yes, Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor Vazia. I just wanted to let the council know that I just double-checked my, my Nextdoor post from Friday, March 15th, when we published the agenda, and I did publish the agenda and post a link to the packet and highlight public hearing item 5A and gave the full title of this item, along with one other item from the agenda to highlight items that may be of public interest. So it was out there.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, then we'll open it up for public comment. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this issue? Okay, hearing none, I will, oh, yes. Okay, sorry, I can't see you, they're behind Theresa.
Lucinda Smith. It's the first time I've ever heard you don't, "I can't see you." I just stand. I have to say that we need a dog park. I love dogs, I have a dog, I had two dogs, but we need a dog park in here, in this town. Larkspur has one, Mill Valley has one, we need one, and I think we need to limit the number of dogs that any commercial, as you call it, dog walker can take in there. I've seen them walk down the street with eight, 10, 12 dogs. That is ridiculous, and it's got to be stopped. So if we put through this ordinance, which I think we need to do, we need to put some limit on the number of dogs that can be walked. Now, what they do is, okay, then one person takes 10 or 12, and another person takes another 10 or 12, and they just watch them, now they can't pick up after all those dogs. It isn't going to happen. So I think we need to have a better thrust on what the limits are going to be, and that needs to be part of the ordinance, and I would really support that we have some kind of a dog park. I think it's one that we need to have. I don't know that they're very loud. To Pixley, I go a lot, not to Pixley, to Piper Park, excuse me, and yes, there are a few barking now and then, but I don't think that it's something that would, you know, disturb people's sleep at night, or, it's closed at night, so please consider that.
Can I ask her a question?
Yes, go ahead.
How specifically are you, in what specific way would you like the ordinance amended?
I would-
Have you looked at it?
Well, I, just, just as it was reading, and I looked at it when I got a copy of the agenda.
Okay.
But I think that, well, if you're a dog walker, maybe five dogs. I think you could probably keep track of five dogs and being able to take care of them and pick up after them, but to have so many, it's just insane. It's not fair to the dogs, and it's certainly not fair to whatever properties the dogs are engaging in.
Thank you. Is there any other comment from the public? Okay, then I'm going to bring it back to council, and I think staff is going to, they're searching through stuff, they're getting-
This is already a reference to the county code, right? Which says five.
There's a county ordinance about this, so.
So on the ordinance, yeah, on page four of the ordinance, it's 8.04.020, control of dogs, leash requirement, I'm sorry, it's 8.04.010, adoption of county code. The county code only allows up to five, so if that is covered on the dog walker, the question that we are working on is to make sure that they are, one, applying for business licenses, if they have, that we want to educate them on the county code, and also it's code enforcement. So when you think about big picture, we want to mirror San Anselmo and Larkspur the best we can for Central Marin Police Authority, but also our code enforcement officers that were enforcing the same ordinances and regulations, and so, on the same, on the same token, we're going to direct our code enforcement officers, not Central Marin Police Authority, to go out and make sure the dog walkers are following our ordinance, and so that, that's going to happen immediately. And so I feel like they're-
So there's no need to amend this ordinance?
There's not.
Change this ordinance because we're just going to apply the county ordinance? I think that's what I hear you saying.
That's correct.
Yes, and actually, that county rule, the limit of five, currently applies, it just sounds like it hasn't been enforced, in part because perhaps there are walkers here who don't have licenses, who may not even realize that that requirement exists, or realize it's not being enforced. So there, you don't need to make any changes to the legislation in order to, we just need to enforce it.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I ask, do we know, is the Piper Park dog park still open? The advantage of that, when we had an energetic dog, was that it's a fully fenced area where you could throw the ball and the dog could go 80 miles an hour to catch the ball. So that would be different from our park. It would be a whole different way of use, you know, utilizing space, and I'm not sure that anybody's found a good place for that here myself.
Can I, I just want to pick up on what he's saying. I really want to see some options for a dog park. I don't know if my council, other fellow council members share that opinion, but I would very much like to see that, and if we can't figure out how to get it through the Parks and Rec Commission for four years, then let's just get some proposals from, from you guys. But, you know, we're talking about how we're changing our ordinance now so that we're going to allow dogs in the park like the other towns do near us. They also have dog parks, and we have lots of people with dogs, myself included. I take my dog over to the Larkspur Dog Park, so, two dogs. I would love to see some options. Again, I don't know if anybody else shares that or not, but that would be, so I'm totally behind approving this tonight, but I very much want to see options for dog parks, whether or not, if we can't get Parks and Rec to agree on it, then, you know, let's just bring it to the council and let us talk about it. Is that a fair thing to ask?
And by that mean, you mean, Mr. Mayor, a fenced area so that the dog can run free?
Yes, like in, like you were just talking about in Larkspur. You can take your dog, you put him off leash, they can play with other dogs, it socializes the dogs.
Right.
Tires them out, they have a good time. Throw the ball.
And I would, I'd suggest there's sort of a gravel area opposite the back of the Akira station. There's a pump station there, too. There's a big strip of land with trees in there, and you just put a fence in there, and you probably get a couple of acres in there and just let the dogs run.
In the east, the east side of, or the bay side of San Clemente?
I think, I think there may be options within town park, behind Park Madera Center. There might be a way to fence off something there that's more in the center of town and accessible to everybody, but I would love to see some options, because I think a lot of people in town would love to see a dog park, and we have talked about it for years, we have not been able to move forward on it, and I would like to see us move forward on it.
I kind of like Jim's idea there. I haven't spent a lot of time right on that pathway, but maybe there is space there.
Yeah, and I'm not thinking of a fancy dog park.
No.
I'm just thinking of a long dog run where you let the-
Okay. Just a fence in space, let the dogs go, let them run, let them play with other dogs, let them have a good time. We should be able to figure that out.
Yeah, I know when they were talking about dog parks before, you know, they, consultant basically was trying to talk, talk us into dog jungle gyms and-
No, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I think you're exactly right. During the campaign, I visited more than 1,000 homes, and I was surprised at how, how frequently dog parks, the, the desire for a dog park came up. So I think you're exactly right that this is something that the public is really waiting for.
Yeah. Thank you. I, I'm waiting for it.
Yes.
I would love to see it.
I was going to move, I was going to move the adoption of the ordinance.
I'll just say, I think I heard you loud, and Claire, I just want to say we are dominating as a town, we're focused on dog parks, I just want to, on the record, but it is important. Staff is going to try to work with the commission to see if we can get some direction for them quickly, and if we can't, maybe a subcommittee, and we will come back to the council with options. We hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. And if we can't, and as I said, if we can't get Parks and Rec to agree on something, get it to us and let us take a look at it. I think there's enough energy here that we would like to do something.
And one thing I'd suggest is, if you need to sort of have a mini dog park in one part of town where small dogs could go.
Like mine.
Whatever, and another area with more space, you know, and what, good fencing will cost, what, 10 grand? Right?
We have to talk about, we have to talk about the color of the fence.
I think the point is just that there seems to be substantial interest, and we'd love to see somebody-
Yes. In the meantime, I would like to propose that we approve, at least on the initial read, ordinance number 984, amending chapter 8.04 of the town municipal code to, A, allow dogs on leash in public park areas designated by town council by resolution, B, clarify that leashed dogs in public places must be under a person's constant control, and C, make other non-substantive changes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second. I can tell this is Sloan's highest priority.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Vazia.
Yes, and we still need a second possible motion to adopt the resolution?
Right.
Is that correct? Okay, is there a motion?
Since I'm on a roll here, I'll make the motion that we adopt the town council resolution on this matter, as drafted. Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Vazia.
Yes. Okay, moving on to business items. Item 6A, consideration and possible adaption to adopt resolution number 09/2019, approving 5% additional pay and revising salary schedule for town clerk, finance director, admin assistant, financial analyst, financial analyst, two positions for additional responsibilities requested of them to provide services to the Central Marin Fire Authority and the Marin Emergency Radio Authority. Todd, I think we're-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm sorry, we'll work on our titles, they're very wordy, but this is the-
They're very wordy. But this is the second, the second meeting to discuss this issue.
You need to make them more obscure.
There you go. We discussed this at the last meeting. Again, we're taking on with council discretion, direction. The Central Marin Fire Authority effective March 25th, and MIRA, the Marin Emergency Radio Authority, probably in the next sixty days. And so with that added responsibility, again, we're requesting that the six mentioned positions receive 5% additional pay for the additional responsibilities that they're taking on. The Central Marin Fire Authority consolidation, our staff will provide administrative and financial support. We, we should consider that support to continue for the next ten years plus. It's, it's something that, if you look at the, the previous history with Larkspur and Corder Madera with the police authority, it's hard to transition those services. So you should, you should anticipate this is a long-term commitment. And then again, MIRA is something that we'll evaluate on an annual basis. If it becomes too cumbersome and too difficult, staff will recommend that we sever that contract. Regardless of MIRA, my, my recommendation to the council would still be 5% additional pay for those six positions. Again, the town manager is not included in that, but the staff is. It's something we feel comfortable that we can provide that additional service, but I also think we should recognize, and it is the standard, that those positions receive the additional pay. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I had a question. So the financial implications of this are that financially, basically neutral, if I recall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a good question. So we anticipate the revenue for taking on these two additional JPAs to be in the hundred and five to hundred and ten thousand range. Our expenditures to provide that service with the additional pay is approximately seventy four, seventy-five thousand. So we'll probably, we're estimating in the first year to net twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? No? Okay, I'm going to open up to the public for comment. Any comment from the public on this? Okay. Hearing none, I will bring it back to the council for questions and a possible motion?
I feel like we've got this.
Or comments, excuse me, and a possible motion.
Mr. Mayor, I feel like we had a consensus last time we were sort of roughly talking about it. If, I will make the motion if somebody wants to talk about something.
Go ahead.
All right. I'll move that we adopt resolution number 09/2019, approving 5% additional pay and revising the salary schedules for, as written, et cetera, et cetera.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Avasio?
Yes. Okay. Item 6B, discussion and possible action to approve draft letter declaring support for SB 5, Beal slash McGuire Local State Sustainable Investment Incentive Program and Authorization for Mayor to Sign a Letter. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor Avasio. I, I think you may all received this request from the League of California Cities last week. So we did receive it in time to put it on the agenda, but they do request letters tomorrow prior to the committee hearing this item. Of course, we can send it in later, but they think the biggest impact will come from receiving letters early on. So if you are interested in submitting a letter of support, and you do wish to revise this in any way, we can make the revisions tomorrow, we can make the revisions tonight. Just, you can send it as is. It is the boilerplate as provided by the League of California Cities. It can be customized to include as much or as little additional information as you like.
Are there any questions from council?
No, but I like the length.
I do, too. Makes it easier for me to sign stuff.
I do have one question, which is a rather big question, and it may be off-agenda topic. As a matter of fact, that is, I'm, I'm wondering why we're not also supporting SB 4, which is the additional Senator McGuire bill in the same topic area. SB 5, as I understand it, is sort of a recreation of a financing tool that used to be used all over the state, namely through redevelopment agencies. And so I think there's a lot easier time supporting that than supporting something that may look as though it impinges upon our zoning and our local control. And perhaps that's the answer to that question.
The short answer is that this was the request that we received, unless I missed an email from, from the league.
I haven't gotten anything on this.
But that is, that is a short answer.
Sloan, you've been at those discussions at the table. Can you?
I have, but I wonder if we should get, I'd like, it's a good, we can talk about this to some extent, although it's not totally before us, so I don't know if we can.
Yeah, we're really here to talk about SB 5-
Okay.
-in this letter, and whether or not we support this. So I think we need to, and the attorney's nodding, so.
And we got to get public comment, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would, I would suggest that we maybe put this on the agenda for the next time. If there is some urgency moving that forward that would not allow us to wait, then we would, we would need to look at other options.
Actually, the only thing I can think of is it's possible that it's not being heard in committee yet, but I would need to look at the dates and the committee assignments for that.
The topic of SB 50 versus SB 4 is up, as best I understand it, and current. I don't know exactly which days, but it's up this week and next week. It was up last week, and so.
And again, we've been requested for this letter, and that's the item that we're allowed to talk about on the agenda. So if we can stick to that, that would really be helpful, I think, for everybody, and make the attorney happy.
Flag this for the next time at the draft agenda.
Cool.
Part of this agenda.
Okay. Any other questions on this, then, from the council?
No.
No, then I will open it up for public comment. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak about item 6B? Okay, hearing none, I will bring it back to the council for discussion and a possible motion.
I think it's terrific that the league is actually taking this affirmative position and saying something that they can say yes to on this topic.
Are you making a motion?
I'll make the motion that we sign, or that we authorize our mayor to sign this letter of support to the League of Cities' position on SB 5.
Second.
Can I make one comment before we vote?
Yes.
It's enough to do with the substance of the motion. It's to do with the manner of our, the way our town communicates. I'm, if you want to sign this thing, Bob, I'm good with it. I never like when we sign form letters, but I don't really have the energy to do a redraft myself. So if you want to sign it, I'm good with it. You know what I mean? This is the language the league wants us to use, and I just think it's just poor. It's like, if we think it, then we should have our own words, and if we don't think, you know what I mean? But whatever.
You're totally right, but also the point of this letter is so that, you know, Beal and McGuire can say, oh, we've got like, you know, one hundred and thirty-nine municipalities instead of one hundred and thirty-eight.
But then it's like a petition.
Well, that's what it is, right? I mean, effectively.
Every letter that we've done in the past, though, Eli, we, I personally have, with Jim and other people, we've like rewritten the damn thing.
That's awesome.
I just, I don't want to volunteer to do that. I know, that's why, that's why I'm not saying.
Your offer stands.
It's due tomorrow.
Yeah, the timing on this is-
It's due tomorrow.
All right. Anyway, sorry, go ahead, please.
But thank you.
The SB 5 letter we can work on.
Okay.
Motion made.
This is SB 5.
We had a motion, and we've seconded it, and it's-
This is SB 5. You mean SB 4.
Right.
Okay.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Avasio?
Yes. Okay. So we'll move to town manager and council reports. Todd?
I have no reports tonight. Thank you.
Whoa. Okay. Council members, any reports?
TAM's technical committee is looking at the various options for solving what's Route 37's problem. The fundamental problem is that, you know, you know what a 100-year flood is, right? It's a flood that is supposed to occur only once every hundred years. It's a 1% chance of, a 1% chance of occurring flood. Well, we've had three 100-year floods in the last three years at the western edge of Route 37 for no terribly surprising reasons. A lot more precipitation. There is, there has been sort of a traditional solution proposed, which would be rebuilding levees. Problem, levees are on private land and public land, and it's very expensive to do that in an environmentally correct fashion. There apparently is a new solution to just raise the roadway, and this is a Caltrans design-type resolution or, or a solution, which is not going to be a billion for, which is the traditional solution, but considerably less, and they're exploring that early stages. The signalization of northbound onramps is about to commence, and we're supposed to be getting letters on when we're affected. And finally, the Subcommittee on Electric Vehicles is going to be considering an, an initial motion of TAM to put some money towards MCE for the support of its electric vehicle promotion program. In the last year, MCE has spent about a million and a half. TAM has put a very small number forward in draft. The Electric Vehicle Committee is considering increasing that. And I said, make it 10 times the 10 to 10K that they have suggested, because early adoption is, it's accelerating very rapidly. There's now about 39 different manufacturers of electric vehicles, so it's pretty cool. The 100% Renewable Energy Subcommittee of the Drawdown Marin Program is advancing. It was meeting earlier this afternoon, and I had to leave to come here. And so, yes-
Is that a council assignment?
No.
Okay. I want to clarify, then we should not, this is for council assigned positions?
Okay. Well, it's a county, is a county activity, so that's all that I have.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Eli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got some notes. So CMA had a good productive meeting on Thursday. The pre-design is done for the new cogenerator engine. That's going to turn solid waste into renewable energy, so that's exciting. We're going to hope to expand the capacity on that engine to the maximum possible in order to obviously provide as much green energy as we can. So there's some, some hurdles there, but we're thinking that we can hopefully overcome these. CMA also addressed some of its benefits and found some savings to the tune of $30,000, so that's nice. We're happy about that. The Larkspur Corder Madera School District had a rough meeting. They're going through some tough financial situations. They had some budget cuts, and they had 13 layoffs, which is really unfortunate. So I think that we're going to be working, hopefully, with them in the, in the future to see if there's any way that we can kind of support each other and kind of ease the pain there, because, you know, we all care a lot about education, and none of us want to see the children suffer when, when the school district falls on hard times. So that's a bummer.
Does that mean we're going to see people here asking for money pretty soon? Is that what you're saying?
I wouldn't be surprised. I mean, yeah. We'll see. The NRGs had a, the Mariner Cove Energy had a great drill, and then there was a, like, a NRG sort of leadership meeting at the community center. Corder Madera actually showed some real leadership there, and I think we're in large part kind of guiding the way for other NRGs, even in neighboring communities, to help kind of spread this program. So I think that's a really good sign for disaster preparedness. And then we had another good meeting of the Town Hall Annex Working Group, and I think we're getting, we're making progress, and we're getting, moving towards bringing a couple of options to council to consider. So Jim, welcome to contribute anything else there you want, but I think it's going well.
You covered it very well. Jim, did you have other reports on?
No.
Those were two important ones.
No reports.
No reports.
One announcement, please. One, one announcement.
Okay.
Tomorrow, there's going to be a session in Mill Valley on climate change adaptation, and RJ Suoco is going to be presenting our, the initial steps of our climate adaptation planning effort, which I think is somewhat the envy of other jurisdictions within the community, or in the county, who are going to be there at the Mill Valley Community Center, nine to, I think it's later afternoon. And I will plan to be there, but.
Thank you. And, is there something else?
I was just, so this is like the first product of that, that consulting firm that we contracted?
It's not really the product so much as keeping the others in the Bay wave action across the county-
Gotcha.
...up with what we're doing, and maybe they can find ways to imitate and do what we're doing.
Sweet. Thank you.
Thank you. Attended several meetings. Probably, the most important one, though, was one that Katie Rice called, and there was a representative from every town there, as well as representatives from the fire departments. And it is, she has asked for an ongoing member from the council to be assigned to this group. We're going to meet on a regular basis, and I'm going to volunteer to do that-
For what?
...and assign myself. The whole point is fire prevention and developing county-wide fire prevention. And it became, it was a very interesting meeting. Katie was there, Matthew Heimel was there, Jason Weber, who's the county fire chief, several people from other fire districts. And what became apparent, you know, they kept saying is we need to be addressing on a county-wide basis, neighborhood preparedness, making sure police and fire work together on any kind of emergency situation, but most importantly, fuel reduction. Huge, huge issue. And we talked a lot about lessons learned from the North Bay fires last year. The fire members had met with those folks after that and had taken away. So they've got lots of new information. Potentially, we're talking about developing a county-wide organization, but certainly a county-wide approach to this, because there's 11 different jurisdictions, as we all know, with the towns, there's the county. And this was something I didn't know. There are 16 different fire agencies, so, in the county. So the goal here is to get everybody working together and coordinating something and addressing fire prevention in a big way on a county-wide basis, which I think would really be helpful. I think all of us would like to see happen. Every, I mean, it, it was really a good meeting, and I'm not sure when the next one's going to be, but I'll, as I said, I would like to move forward with it, since I'm doing a lot of fire stuff, and keep you informed on what's going on with that, if everyone's okay with that.
Thank you.
Yes.
I mean, I think it's, I'm 100% with it, but I think we should put it on an agenda in a formal way, say that we are authorized or approved or whatever.
Okay.
Maybe our attorney could figure out, Rebecca, what the language is. It sounds good to me, but I suspect since it's not agendized, we can't issue that direction.
Oh, right. Yes.
But good luck and God bless, Bob.
Mr. Mayor, is there any other question?
Yes, I am done.
Go ahead.
You just, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Jim.
My question is, is will anything that they're doing slow down, interfere, or otherwise hamper the momentum of our chipper program? Because ideally, I'd like that to accelerate, and maybe we can show it to other towns, and they can do it. It's just-
Todd, can I get your end? Two separate things. They're focused on the 83% of vegetation that is in the county jurisdiction.
Yeah.
And so this is, so it does not hamper anything, our half a million dollars that we put towards education and prevention-
Yeah.
...and a chipper program.
I just want to make certain we don't-
I completely agree with you on that. At the last Disaster Prep Council meeting that we had a few weeks ago, the chipper program came up in Corder Madera, and people are totally behind it and totally excited about it. It's hugely popular, and, you know, the more we do of it, the better. People are looking for ways to get rid of vegetation, and the more we can do that, the better off we're all going to be, I think.
Here, here.
So I just want to say, I appreciate that you brought up fire preparedness, because that reminded me, it's something that I wanted to share that I forgot, which was also from this NRG meeting. We had a member of the resident, a Corder Madera resident there, who spoke about how she, her house is no longer insurable for fire insurance. She can't get homeowner's insurance now. I'm pretty sure she's in Lower Chapman. And she, she spoke at this meeting, and she told you-
I thought it was Stetson.
Say? What?
I thought it was Stetson, but-
Maybe, yeah, you may be entirely right. But anyway, she, I mean, she said she was scared to death, and I was just, I don't know, it kind of moved me, because it's like, you think about somebody who may have most of their assets tied up in this house, and they can't protect it. That's terrifying. So, and then I've got a neighbor mine in Mariner Cove who says that his flood insurance just went up by a factor of 10. So I think we're really kind of starting to butt up against the realities of climate change here, and what an insane burden it's going to put on a lot of members of our community, and such a tough challenge that I think it's more critical than ever that we really work together to try and head off these challenges.
I think you're absolutely right, and I can just tell you professionally, I have seen now a couple of cases on new home sales where they have to change the fire insurance policy, and-
Yeah.
...the new policy is through the roof. I mean, it is crazy. And-
And it doesn't cover much.
Well, yeah, yeah, exactly. And it costs a fortune. And, you know, this is people's most valuable asset.
Right.
And the cost of construction has gone through the roof with all of this stuff. So if something does happen, replacing the house has become way more expensive than it used to be, so.
And it's just terrible, because it's like, with the new insurance policies, it's basically that, it used to be, as I understand it, it used to be that you could, you could basically get better fire insurance rates if you maintained your property a certain way. But now it's really based much more on where your house is geographically, and it just takes that out of homeowner's control, which is such a helpless feeling for people to have.
Which is why I think this county-wide approach, if we can do some fuel reduction on a major scale-
Absolutely.
...would be a great thing for all of us, because goodness knows, it could happen here easily, as we all know.
And one thing we will eventually have to grapple with is, so the tension between our desire to maintain trees and foliage and the fire people's desire to clear cut everything in sight, you know, and it's just sort of like, okay, what will be our balance?
I just had that discussion today with a friend of mine on- I just had that discussion today with a friend of mine on Christmas Tree Hill. I was looking at it, and we were both going, oh my gosh, you know. You live there, it's, you know, it's...
We should also not be shy about implementing and reinforcing our building codes, and particularly for the wooly areas and requiring fire-resistant materials.
Got it. Okay. We're going off the agenda.
There is a lot of moving parts, and so we'll, I'm gonna agenda, and agendize this at a future meeting, because this is a good update. I think you've asked a couple of times for the fire team to come in, and, because there's a lot of moving parts here in what we're doing, so...
Thank you. I'm sorry for getting off the agenda a bit. I think that's it for council reports. Moving on to item 8A, review of draft agenda for April 2nd. Are there any questions or substantive?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So Rebecca handed you a revised draft agenda. Does everybody have that?
Yes.
So really, basically, we moved all of our items to the consent calendar. You have one public hearing coming. It's the subdivision on Robin Drive. We have one presentation. This is from MMWD, and it has to really go on this council meeting, because it's a timing issue for them. But this is their fee proposal under consideration, and so they want to come in, and we're gonna allow them 10 minutes to provide an update, and five minutes for council, and then community questions as well. And we've asked Mimi Willard for cost to come in and, at the following meeting, to give a quick 10-minute presentation to council on some feedback their group has regarding this fee increase and process.
Wouldn't it be better if they were at the same meeting?
No.
Okay.
And so that's, so that's coming your way. The Planning Commission meeting was not contentious by any means, but it was about three hours. We believe we can save an hour at least on our meeting, and really, it's the...
That's it?
Plus. So the, but the, our director of planning did send you an email today, and just with all the information, please look at the, and take a look at the Planning Commission meeting and watch it, because we're gonna, basically, as staff, we'll have the experts there for, if you have any questions, but we're going to assume that you did see that meeting. And if you haven't, let me know, and we can move our presentation accordingly.
Okay. Any questions or...
Just two quick things. One of them is, I don't think it would take more than five minutes, frankly, but can't we add an agenda item to get Bob appointed to the fire thing?
I have that, too.
And then, the second thing is, and I had meant to make this comment with respect to any agenda item, but given what you just said, Todd, and also, I wish Maru was here for it. I very much appreciate it when one of our commissions have considered an item to have included in the report the minutes of their meeting. So if the Parks and Rec or Planning Commission considered the dog park or whatever, it would be very important to me to hear both what they discussed and kind of the sense of it. I feel like that's part of the job, and I didn't notice until we started discussing it that that wasn't in there. I'm not sure it makes a difference in this case, because we all have independent, you know, investigation that we've done on this thing. But in the future, and I meant to mention it to him in particular, but it's really to you I should be saying this, I think.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on the agenda? No? Okay.
So the minutes you wanted were for the leashes in the town park, as opposed to the numerous meetings they have?
Yeah, if we, only for the, the segment of the minutes that deals with whatever's in front of us. If any commission has treated that issue and then recommended for against it before it comes to us, I'd like to have, not just the fact that they did recommend it, but like, why? What did they talk about, or whatever?
Okay. You got it. And then just one other thing, the draft agenda is, if we wanted to talk about any letters or assembly bills, senate bills, the draft agenda is set for that for you on a two-week basis, where if you wanted to bring something at a future meeting, staff usually handles any request on those. We rely on Nancy, you know, Hall Bennett, with the league, if it's something that's coming. And so that's how we work as a practice, but if we want to change that in future agenda items in the draft agenda, if we want to put something down there as a discussion point for legislation...
Nancy's very reliable.
And I would suggest that that item incorporate SB 4, SB, and SB 50, Scott Wiener's bill, and possibly the CASA compact, which, as you know, we've all been, all been asked to weigh in, and we have never really discussed that as a council. So I think those, those topics all work together.
I think, can we take that under consideration and then review the agenda again, because from a timing standpoint, that's...
It's, that could be a long meeting if we try to also do the residences, right?
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on the agenda? Okay, then we are going to adjourn to closed session. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, what? Oh, I'm sorry, I can take public comment, I have to take public comment on the closed session. If any member of the public would like to address the council on the closed session. Hearing none, then we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you for reminding me.